Thank you. Good evening. It is now six o'clock on August 5th, 2025. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Board. The Planning Board is a seven-member board. Any special permit decision of the board requires a two-thirds vote. Two-thirds of a seven-member board is five. If only five members vote, the vote would have to be unanimous. Any decision on preliminary and definitive plans, approval not required, and proposed zoning amendments requires a majority vote of the full board. Any decision on scenic road permits requires a majority of the quorum present. Any person giving testimony must state and spell their name and provide their street address for the record. All questions from the public should be directed through the chair. This meeting is live and streamed on Sandwich Community Television's website and on Local Channel 9. This meeting is being recorded and will be available on the SCTV website at www.sandwichtv.org tomorrow. According to town bylaw, meetings are audio recorded. If anyone intends to also record, kindly notify the chair. And I was notified. Thank you very much. So let's all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to open it up for a public comment. I do understand that someone wishes to be heard today, and I would like to open it up to you at this time. If anything relates to the other items on the agenda, we certainly have an opportunity to have further discussion down the road. But sir, I understand you'd like to say something?
Thank you. This relates to, I can't hear my name and everything, but this relates to item three under the board discussion.
Would you prefer to wait for, let's do it now. Let's do it now. Have a seat. And if you could just state your name and your address, please.
James Rogers, 197 Main Street, R-O-G-E-R-S, no D. I'm the chairperson of the Sandwich Tree and Landscape Advisory Group. And I'd like to address the third item about parking at the Snowy Owl. The parking situation there is all day, every day. It's really a situation where a park has been turned into a parking lot. If you look at the apron around the perimeter, it's already degraded. There is also an issue of a stream that runs through a part of it. And I think that's in violation of state and federal law, environmental protection law. We just don't know what the Snowy Owl has done to try and mitigate the situation, whether they have reconfigured the area around their property and looked for other properties as well as park. So I think these are some considerations you might consider. Also, it's an area that is maintained by the Parks Department. So I think you should perhaps check with the Parks Department on their opinion about this, too. I think that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Please take your comments.
Hi, I'm Candace Murphy, and I live at 6 Charles Street. So I'm just up the road from the Snowy Owl, and I have to look at the cars parked there every day, sometimes as many as 15 cars. And I have gone into their parking lot and seen about 19 open spaces. So my question is, and I love the Snowy Owl. I mean, I go down there for coffee and pastries quite a bit. I love having it there. I like the activity and seeing all the tourists walking down and getting coffee and bringing their dogs and playing games and stuff. But I'm not sure why they're saying, put the employees out there who are going to be there from, say, 7:00 in the morning till 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon. Why not have them park inside their lot? And then the people, if there's overflow and they can't fit their patrons, the patrons could park at the town greenway, and then they would be more transient. You know, they wouldn't be there from 7:00 to 3:00 or 7:00 to 5:00 every single day. And it would fluctuate based on the seasons. You know, less people in the winter, more people in the summer. So we have a fluctuation. It seems like now it's 10 cars at least every single day. And as Jim said, the apron is degrading. Who's going to pay for that? Now is the town going to be replacing and repairing the damage that they're doing to our park? I think years ago, when I first moved here, 11 years ago, we had the farmer's market there. And I think they moved the farmer's market because the parking wasn't good. And I still think the parking isn't good there. I mean, I think it's okay temporarily. You stop, go for a walk, come back, get in your car. But day in and day out, I think they're only closed two days out of the year, Thanksgiving and Christmas. I've talked to some of the neighbors that live right next door. They've been there for 14 years. Their mailbox has been knocked over five or six times. And the reply from the company was, how do you know it was our client that did it? Another person usually has a tag sale out on their front greenway. And I guess they weren't allowed to do it this year because there was no parking. So it's changing the character of our town. And I think it's important not to change the characters. That's why we don't have a McDonald's and we don't have a Costco. It's changing our integrity of our town. Thank you.
Has the Snowy Owl been addressed about this ever? And have they had a response?
Well, they're currently going to be working through the Zoning Board of Appeals on their special permit to discuss whether the activity is consistent with the permit or requires an amendment. So they've submitted an application for that to get that process going.
And what was the special permit for parking in that spot?
I'll have to go back for institutional memory here. I think it was the nature of the business.
Sure. So they needed a special permit to conduct their retail coffee operation at that location. The zoning board at the time had a discussion regarding parking with the applicant. They were not authorized to park elsewhere but their own property. So we had a discussion with them about potential solutions that they could move forward with. And they've elected to go back before the Zoning Board of Appeals for an amendment to their permit to authorize them to park in that area. It is under board discussion, and it's item three because that's a request for comment with the board tonight. And it goes before the zoning board next week.
What has changed that, I mean, Snowy Owl's been there for quite some time. Now, what is?
What changed is that we received a formal complaint.
Okay.
So before then, we did not receive a formal complaint. Typically, how zoning works.
Were they parking there anyhow?
Soon as the operation began, correct.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that.
Do you know what the other tentative solutions were for parking that were discussed? I don't know if you know.
They were looking into it with our engineer to see if they could expand their existing parking lot. There is wetlands towards the back of it, but there would be room for expansion. But there's some pretty severe grading that would also have to occur. It's quite hilly. So I think that that would be a backup option that they were looking at if the zoning board did not elect to amend their permit to allow off-site parking.
So is there a difference here between like their employees parking in a place that you're allowed to publicly park versus a patron to park there?
Not under zoning. So what we're looking at, something is a special permit use. We're looking at whether it creates noise nuisance hazard or congestion to a neighborhood. So you're only permitted as long as you don't create any thresholds that would create a noise nuisance or congestion to a neighborhood. So we look at the surrounding area. We look at what historically has happened there. The board talks about that. They listen to the public as to what they feel on the matter, and then they vote accordingly.
So more discussion to come. Mull it over as we continue on. So with that, we can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is to review and approve the minutes from April 1st of 2025. I understand that we're a bit backlogged. So we're going back. Has anyone, did anyone have any changes or edits that they'd like to propose to those minutes? And so hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of April 1st, 2025.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of April 1st, 2025.
Is there a second? My second? All in favor? Any opposed or abstention? The next item is the submission of new plans. And I apologize. I don't believe there are any submissions of new plans. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is there anyone in the public that has a submission of a new plan that was not already put on the agenda? Thank you. We can move on to old business. First item on old business is Zero Gully Lane and 39 Gully Lane. Approval not required. Ellen Asak, on behalf of the Constance S. Crowell Trust of 1991 and the Marsh Family Trust Agreement, continued old business matter for the purpose of clarifying the reconfiguration of the cemetery lot. Just want the public to know this is not a public hearing at this time. I'm going to open the matter now to Leanne, perhaps?
Sure. Yeah. So this approval not required was previously submitted, I believe, in February of last year. The board unanimously endorsed it, and it's come back for just clarification on who owns which parcel for the cemetery lot. So nothing really has changed in terms of land division. But the only thing we are missing, and one of the, Ellen Asak is here tonight, but the representative from the Marsh Family Trust has not authorized us to move forward because we don't know that they are indeed in favor of this. So I have reached out to a representative from the trust. I have emails. I have called. We've not heard from them. So I think if the board were to endorse tonight, we would just conditionally endorse that we could approve it and wait for, which I'm sure she'll probably get back to us tomorrow.
For a response from the Marsh Family?
Yes, she is aware of this and also sanctions the endorsement.
Just as a point of clarification, does the email need to be read into the record regarding the previous information and that it would be put on the agenda? Okay, thank you. All right. Steve, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I don't. Leanne's covered it.
Sam, is there anything you'd like to contribute?
No, we looked at the plan and agreed that it's the same geometry. It just looks like it's better described for the needs and bounds in the plan. So we really have no issue.
At this time, I would open this up to the applicant. Ellen Asak, if you would like to be heard.
Yes.
If you could just step up and state your name and also your address, please.
Ellen Asak, 35 Cully Lane. And so it's just a matter of adding labels to the plan, needs and bounds labels, which were not on the original drawing. So it's the same plan. It's an exercise, a long exercise. I think a little bit longer now. But it is, it's the same, it's the same plan. And so we're just going to, you know, add this one to the one that's recorded. And as you can see, it just defines the boundaries with labels that weren't on the previous plan.
And it sounds like, based on what Leanne had reported, that you had some communication with the Marsh Family?
Yeah, yeah. So this is, yes.
Waiting for that?
Yeah, and it was initiated by the other party. So basically, I'm following through on it. And hopefully, you know, they'll be in touch with Leanne soon.
So I don't open it to the rest of the board. Does anyone have any comment?
So this doesn't require an approval. However, it does require the endorsement by the board's designated. So the suggestion, one option to entertain is the board could vote to authorize that endorsement, contingent on the other party agreeing that this represents their interest.
Well, I think that that makes sense to me. It sounds like both, both all the parties are in agreement. We're just waiting for the final confirmation. And so we could have that conditional. All right? We don't need to vote.
It should be a motion, I think, yeah.
I'll make a motion to endorse the proposed plan pending approval by the Marsh Family Trustee.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hear none? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you're going to vote, it's not weak. It's not a strong argument.
Thank you. And the next item is new business. I don't believe there is any new business to discuss. Is that right? Okay, excellent. Let's move on. Move on to the board discussion. Item number seven on the agenda. We have some proposed zoning amendments. And Leanne and Steve, I'm not sure who wishes to go first this time?
Well, we have to lead, I think, for sure.
So previously in June, we discussed potential zoning amendments for a special town meeting. This is the first draft before you. Nothing is set in concrete or stone. It's all up for discussion. It's all up for changes, expansion, decreation, whatever the board would like. So this is just the first rough draft. So we start off with, and if the chair doesn't mind, I'll go through it section by section. We'll go through the questions. There could be more questions. And I think maybe there might be a couple of people in the audience that are hoping to speak to maybe one or two of the items. If the chair would like that. Yeah. So starting off, we have some of the stormwater regulations. So we do have to add a section number under the general permit for stormwater discharges. It just helps us keep compliance with some of our federal standards. And Sam will be able to speak more clearly to that.
It's a procedural item. When we initially made this change, we should have had another section here. So we need to clean that up. Really not intended to change any practice or procedure that we have. It's just cleaning up the regulations.
And then we get into landscaping and screening. So the purpose of this is twofold. We currently don't have any mechanism to stop tree clearing on private property in absence of a building permit. And we've ran into this issue several times. And we also have no authority to implement erosion control measures on lots that have been clear cut in the absence of a building permit. So internally, we took a look at our current, at our current bylaws. And we looked to see if we could include something that wouldn't be too burdensome on, you know, a homeowner or someone that was trying to develop land, but that at least gave us some type of regulation so that we wouldn't have run off into the streets. We would be able to preserve tree canopy as best as possible. So you'll see that we added that, you know, a site plan review, which is internal. There's no cost or fee associated. It's something that is internal in the town offices. They're required, if you're disturbing 5,000 square feet or more, you're required to come into us. We can look at the design of the project, the implementation, and we can start to look at any type of erosion control that would be needed on, you know, the town road or there was a drainage system nearby that we wanted to help preserve. So that would be the first, that's A. Then we just wanted to just kind of revise B a little bit. So not less than 30% of a lot area shall be retained in a vegetated condition that was already there, unless reduced by special permit. Under the Zoning Board of Appeals statute, you're allowed to reduce tree canopy through them. So if that happened, then this would not apply. And then we added that low-impact stormwater management practices, such as bio-retention areas, filter strips, vegetated swales, rain gardens, constructed wetlands, and other low-impact development practices that are recognized. I'm asked that she says Department of Environmental Protection could also be included in the vegetated areas because most of those things are vegetated in nature. So they could be included in that calculation, which would help kind of smaller lots if this were to come into play. Then, as we go into vegetated restoration, we just wanted to add that, you know, no species be planted. That's on the do-not-plant list from the town warden. And then we just wanted to add that, so previously, you had to have surety in the form acceptable to the building commissioner, the town treasurer. And it's just an amount sufficient shall be provided. So it's just like a little bit of clarifying points in there, but it's still the same intent. You know, if you reach the threshold where you would need surety, we're just clarifying what that means. Okay, and then on to D would be the next thing. During clearing or other construction activities, all vegetation to be retained shall be surrounded by a temporary protected fencing or other measures before clearing or grading occurs and maintained until all construction work is complete and the site is cleaned up. Areas should be large enough to encompass the essential reason of all vegetation to be protected. And all vegetation within the protective fencing shall be retained in an undeserved state. So that's basically saying, whatever 30% of the lot that you're going to keep vegetated, you're just going to put some type of barrier around it so that it doesn't get disturbed during construction activities so that you can help retain the natural canopy. And then E, in the case of an emergency, removal shall occur and permits can be sought thereafter. So there's always emergency situations where something happens. We don't want to preclude anyone from doing emergency work on their property or penalize them for doing so. You know, there might be a storm. There might be damage. There might be flooding. It could be even that our own fire department needs to put in an emergency line or the water department does. So then they can permit that after the fact.
That sounds like a very reasonable safety valve. Were you, when you had internally drafted this, were you looking at other towns that have similar wording to their landscape?
Yeah, we were basing it off. The Cape Cod Commission has a model three bylaw. And then we looked at several other Cape towns to see, you know, what type of levels of restriction that they had. And then the Cape Cod Commission themselves have some additional bylaws. So it was kind of a review process of everything. It was a lot larger. We all sat together and kind of wheedled down to see what really made sense. We felt that a threshold of 5,000 square feet felt like that made sense because we don't want to preclude, you know, the regular homeowner from being able to do landscaping work. I don't know if you have anything to add or if there's anything you didn't like?
I think it looks great, but it's just that, to me, 5,000 square feet seems small. And I'm thinking about people who are perhaps building on some of the remaining small lots in town, right? I don't know if there's any 5,000-square-foot lots left on Town Neck, but there's got to be a handful of 10,000-square-foot lots that are not yet developed. I wonder if we might be putting them in a box by requiring a special permit for 5,000-square-feet of clearing.
We feel that's too low. We can opt in?
Yeah, just, I'm not sure yet. I'm just thinking about it and thinking it's worth a discussion, at least.
Absolutely. Okay, so we can, we can think about that size, and we can always change it later. Point, this is just the first, the first instance. We want to mull it over.
Just to that point, this is for clearing outside of a building permit application.
Yes. Right.
An important distinction. So this is where there's clearing on its own.
So if someone was purchasing a lot which needed to be cleared heavily because they're intending, obviously, to build a structure on it, then they would not fall under this bylaw here because they would have a building permit which would allow them to clear more than 5,000.
Yes, so this is an absence of the building permit. Thank you, Sam. Yeah, so if you have, if you have a building permit, the rule is 30% remains vegetated or reestablished vegetation. So that's just blanket throughout the town for any type of building of a new residence. If you were just clear-cutting a lot and you didn't have your development plans yet, we want to understand why you're clear-cutting the lot first, that you're allowed, should you're allowable use, and that the point of the plans are to permit that. So it's just like a little bit more information. It's not to say we wouldn't allow someone to do it. It's site plan review. You typically don't have a denial through site plan review. You just have a few conditions. So we would never deny someone their right to be able to build on a property. But it would just be one, or we've had two cases in the past five years of land that were clear-cut, up to three to four acres. And both times when they came in to speak with us about the uses, they weren't zoned for commercial uses. So the use that they clear-cut for wasn't even allowable in the district. So we just kind of want to make sure we get it in front of that.
And certain things like erosion controls that protect our stormwater investments in the streets, our wetland resources, that, so we have some mechanism and require some erosion controls, separate controls.
Having seen some of the clear-cutting that's happened, I think this is excellent. And I think it's really needed to protect the environment and to address erosion control issues. But it sounds like what was talked about previously really addresses the concern of a smaller lot.
We made a couple of changes to 3530, which is erosion control. So for number one, it previously said, no grading or construction shall take place on slopes in excess of 20%, unless adequate provisions apply. But we, after discussion, we decided that it might be a good idea to strike on slopes in excess of 20%. It's pretty rare to get a slope of 20%. But erosion measures should be in place for slopes for a lot less than 20% in order to protect our infrastructure. And then for permanent erosion control measures, including, you know, revegetation, retention basins, siltation barriers, or other measures, the sentence itself just seemed a bit awkward. So we just kind of reversed the words a little bit, but the same intent is there. Nothing really changed. And then there's no need to say when it was last amended. So that's kind of everything for landscaping, screening, and erosion control.
And the erosion control provisions would come into play regardless of the area that's being developed?
Yes, so that would be townwide, and that would be in absence and with a building permit. So then our next section is accessory dwelling units. As we had discussed last time, the size limitation that the state's protected use, ADU, was very limiting to all of our residents. And there was a lot of people that were upset with that. So as promised, we looked at recreating another accessory dwelling unit. We decided to go with expanded accessory dwelling unit, which is an EADU. The names up for, you know, discussion if we don't like that. And I looked at our previous bylaw to kind of think about some of the things that worked in that bylaw that we could potentially reincorporate here. I do have a lot of questions, just kind of gathering some input on what you're thinking. So the first one, it'll be a special permit use from the planning board. And then the following criteria must be met. So the subject property must have a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. So that's up for discussion. I'm not sure what type of lot size you're thinking of. With an expanded accessory dwelling unit, I don't believe we're going to be able to say you can only have one type. This is allowing a second ADU on the property.
Is that because they'd be allowed to buy, right?
Exactly. Yes, so we can't, you know, you can't say one or the other. It would be both. So I think it would be sensible to have a lot size in there when you try to think about how large of a lot would be able to sustain two units as well as a primary dwelling.
But that would mean, so if someone got a property and what they needed was an EADU, if the ADU didn't meet their needs, they'd only fill that if the lot was big enough?
Yeah, otherwise, they would have to do a smaller unit. So 40,000 is pretty standard. We can go higher or lower. I think if we went any higher than 40,000, it's getting very restrictive, and you're really limiting the amount of people that would be allowed to do it.
Did we have that previously?
So we had 20,000 square feet was a special permit, and then 40,000 to 60,000 was by right. But that was just one. So if you had 20,000 square feet, you could have one. 20,000 square feet to allow two.
Can we break that limit in? Is that possible? Or could you just, you should always have it by right?
Yeah, you can, yes. Because if you, you can't condition the EADU to say you're not allowed your protected use. Like, that's protected by the state. So we tried to do which one came first. In both instances, you wouldn't be allowed to tell someone that they can't have their protected use, EADU.
Still have to comply with, like, Title V health regulations and all of that.
So no setbacks, everything else?
Exactly, setbacks, lot coverage. I mean, it won't be as easy to do. So we can think about lot size and whether we want to reduce that or if that works. Only one EADU per lot. I think that makes sense, seeing as how you could have a protected use one also. An ADU should be designed so that to be maximum, semi-practical, adherence of the property on which it is maintained. Consider the following: the architectural details, the design, the building spacing, orientation, screening, door-to-door window location, and building materials. You basically want it to look kind of subservient to the main house, you know, so there's kind of an architectural appeal to it. The ADU should contain no more than two bedrooms and contain no more than 1,200 square feet. Um the ADU should contain no more than two bedrooms and contain no more than twelve hundred square feet of gross floor area. And once an ADU has been added to a single family dwelling or lot, the accessory dwelling unit shall not be enlarged. Uh so this is what we had previously, but we did not have the definition of gross floor area. It made sense, last time we had nine hundred of habitable space. It makes sense to just stick with gross floor area and then just, we should talk about what size we would look for. Um it should be subservient to the house, so in the definition, we may put, you know, some type of calculation that if your house is twelve hundred square feet, it needs to be only eighty percent of that, or you know, we can do eighty-five percent. Um something that just, you know, that the ADU is not larger than the primary dwelling.
And then the old bylaw have, had that language, admitted it had to be.
It had to be subservient, yeah.
And then these, uh number of bedrooms, was that?
We had the limit on two, on the number of bedrooms as two. I mean, we don't have to, I don't, I can't imagine that you could fit many more and with Title Five restrictions. I mean, we, we really don't even have to reference it, I would say, but up to you.
Well, with respect to the gross floor area, I'd like to see us adopt a maximum that's in line with what BORN has in place right now, which is fifteen hundred square feet. But, um, you know, obviously this is just the first way that it.
Sure. Would it make more sense to do a calculation based on the square footage of, of each dwelling?
That's another approach, yeah.
You do eighty or eighty pri- percent of your current structure?
Yeah, that's like a small house, it's a cottage, fifteen hundred square feet is rather large as a house. So forty thousand square feet, I think, if it would be considered to increase it to that size, I think the lot size should increase with that. Because now you're essentially bypassing subdividing land to put multiple houses potentially on one lot, so you're bypassing zoning altogether.
Um you're, uh, well, you see, you're, you're you're just not allowed to condo them, basically, they can't be severed in ownership, so, you know, our bylaw that allows two principal fam- dwellings can be condoed and sold separately. So in this instance, it just has to all be owned by the main property owner.
Right, but you would buy it and then rent all of the structures unless there's some primary residence restriction on this one that was in there.
Which I believe we can do a primary residence restriction, I, I had talked to Amy about it previously. I got a follow up with her and double check, but I feel like she stated in our meeting, um Amy Questletown Council, um that we would be able to do, um a residency restriction on the EADU.
I would be in favor of that.
Okay, so, um, okay, so maybe we could look at doing, you know, eighty percent of your current home. Um that it can be no larger than that, um because then it depends on, you know, what size your, your main home is. And then if people feel uncomfortable with the forty thousand square feet, then if, if that's the calculation.
Move the twelve hundred.
Yeah.
Right now.
Which it could go, if we do eighty percent and someone had, you know, three thousand five hundred, they would have larger than a twelve hundred square foot.
Unless it was max twelve hundred, eighty percent or twelve hundred, whichever is smaller.
Okay, so how are people's feelings then about size? Sounds like we have twelve hundred, we have fifteen hundred.
Obviously twelve, uh, I would say eighty percent. I'm, I'm thinking of my own, I'll, you know, being fully transparent, you know, I did go through this exercise myself, um this spring. And I, I know what gross floor area equates to in terms of habitable living space. In my, in, in my case, twelve hundred square feet left me short, um of what I had intended to build. So I think, you know, fifteen hundred square feet would, would cover it, but fifteen hundred square feet or eighty percent, whichever is greater, I think is a, a good way to do it.
Mm-hmm, I agree, uncomfortable with that. Then why even have the eighty percent?
Well, if a home is only twelve hundred square feet, we wouldn't want them to build a fifteen hundred square foot.
Well, I would be doing whichever was greater.
We'd have to do whichever is less.
Right, that's what I mean, if you do whichever is greater, then the eighty percent would be superfluous, it wouldn't even have any meaning.
Yeah, so be whichever is less, so be fifteen square hundred or whatever. Eighty percent or less, yes. Yeah, that's fine.
Mm-hmm, same.
Yeah.
We're all thinking the same.
Does the board feel comfortable with that if I re-draft? There's another shot at it, so you can always, you know, think over the next two weeks and then we'll bring it back again.
I do, and, and I think if.
So we're saying fifteen hundred instead of twelve hundred.
So fifteen hundred square feet or eighty percent of the gross floor area, whatever existing structure, whichever is smaller.
And if the septic, if the septic is going to regulate, I, I don't feel a need to regulate the number better.
The septic system really will, so since, um, February second, when this, the protected ADU came into effect, we've had four building permits. Um and multiple discussions, and the hardest factor to get over is always the septic. Most people have three bed septics, they're taking a bedroom out of their main structure to add it in, they're looking at one bedroom units. Um we haven't seen, you know, this explosion of bedrooms, it's just not there yet.
Yeah, so I don't, because I'm always in favor of the least number of restrictions possible. I just think fifteen hundred square feet is too large. I, I, for an ADU, I mean cottages are nine hundred square feet. Twelve hundred adds an extra bedroom, so you can fit two bedrooms, you know, a kitchen and a living area. You know, that would be a twelve hundred square foot, I mean, I guess for a fifteen hundred square foot dwelling, what, what would the interior look like?
Uh it could take many forms, right?
Well, I mean, just, I, I, like, for your particular instance, are you looking for two bedrooms and like additional rooms, or just trying to get a, a feeling of the structure?
Yeah, and I guess part of the, part of my confusion is I'm not, I'm not clear exactly what is meant by gross floor area. What, what counts as gross floor area and what, what does not. My understanding was that it was the ex, it was based on the dimensions of the exterior building.
Yeah, so it's based on the dimensions of the interior of the exterior wall, wall to wall. So the difference would be a second story or a finished basement. Um it would be probably challenging to do that on, well, I mean, it would just be very small. If you did a two story that was nine hundred to eleven hundred square feet, it would be, it would be tighter. Um if you wanted something a little larger with additional storage. Um well, the way we have been interpreting it is basements, if they're under the max, um ceiling height to be able to be finished into livable space, we haven't been including that in our gross floor calculation, so that people have more storage options. But they would never have the option down the road to be able to convert it to living space.
So the bylaw that we had on the, prior to the state change, was it was nine hundred gross square area, old definition, not including hallways, closets, correct?
Nine hundred square feet of habitable area.
Habitable.
So it didn't include bathrooms, closets, hallways.
So if you were to take that generally, the non-habitable space, I'm just trying to figure out like, because that, we had, I think we had a good bylaw in the books. Would the twelve hundred gross be equivalent to a nine hundred habitable?
Right, I think that's a good point, like what would.
I'll be expanding on what we had previously and on top of that, expanding by way of having a second one too, so.
It depends on things like the width of the hallways, right? And to be thinking about, you know, one of the, one of the sectors that we're trying to provide housing for, the elder. Over, a lot of them are in wheelchairs and.
Bigger bathroom.
Yeah, bigger bathroom.
Bigger tubs, bigger areas to move around, turn around.
Yeah, I think the building permits that we saw were kind of in between, you know, I, I would, I could go back and check and see, you know, the scale. A, a lot of the ones I saw were, you know, that eleven hundred, twelve hundred, thirteen hundred. Um but at the same time, I think we have to go back to the intent of what we're doing. And, and what is the intent of what we're trying to provide here, and it's, it's more year round housing for people. Um and with more space, you get more families, you know, you get more people that may have disabilities.
Yeah, and it's, it's not just.
And I think if you have a lot size that can accommodate that.
Yeah, without changing the character of the neighborhood.
I mean, I think that was my reservation with the bedrooms, because if we're trying to increase like affordable, you know, attainable housing for workforce people, and they are going to expand families, right? And to stay in Sandwich and continue to be here, we want to not limit people to having to move, because they simply just want to have a larger family. Especially when people may be deciding to, to help like their, their adult children out by building such an ADU.
Right, and I'm, and I'm just thinking, you know, on a forty thousand square foot lot, that's less than an acre. So if you have a house that's eighteen hundred square feet, eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred square feet, which is your standard Cape, more or less, and then you can potentially put on a fifteen hundred square foot EADU, which is really a, a house on that same lot, presumably being supported by septic or maybe sewer, depending on what area, when that gets developed. You're changing the character, the erosion, that's a real substantial development, I think, on a forty thousand square foot lot for that size. You know, and that's my concern.
I'm going to do some homework on previous building permits and see the scale. And for any of the larger ones, what type of lot size, um held the, the, the larger accessory dwelling units? So that we can bring this back and kind of maybe talk more about, about sizing. Um so then the, pretty much the same as the last one, at least one, uh off-street parking space in performance with the town's driveway regulations. In addition to that required for the principal single family dwelling is required for each ADU. Um surfaces shall be paved or stabilized and non-erosive as otherwise approved by the building commissioner. And all parking for the accessory dwelling units shall be off-street. Um the EADU shall be serviced through the existing driveway. Um this is, that's always been standard, we've never allowed an additional driveway for an additional, um accessory dwelling unit. The primary dwelling or the EADU must be the primary residence of the owner and the remaining dwelling must be leased for a minimum of twelve consecutive months with no subletting to occur and is prohibited from rental. And it's prohibited from any uses rental units on a monthly, weekly or daily basis, including but not limited to seasonal rental and rental through vacation rental services and websites. Um so that was taken from our previous accessory dwelling unit bylaw, and we like to see someone have it as their primary residence and, and rent to those who needed it.
I know we, we are striking out the, how many bedrooms are we?
Yeah, we can strike that, yep. Second draft. Uh and then prior to the issuance of a special permit, a certificate in the form of a notarized affidavit to verify that the owner is or shall be in residence in one of the units shall be submitted to the planning board. That was similar, we'd always just made sure that whoever was applying knew the rules that govern this use, basically.
So can I ask a question, so from the enforceability standpoint, so say you get a special permit, you build a PDU, and now you sell your lot. The person who's purchasing the lot didn't have to get the special permit. Are they going to also have to be reserved only to primary residents? Can you make it deed restricted? Is that even an option? Because how else, like she said, would you even enforce that?
Well, the, the use is enforced, so the special permits, they run with land, they don't run with ownership. So that special permit is in effect on that land until revoked. Uh or until the zoning changes and they, they go through some type of amnesty or, or anything that would happen down the road. But the, the use and the governing of the use is enforceable by the building commissioner.
Okay, so the use as a primary residence would be enforceable by way of a special permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we've seen this countless, we used to have the by ride accessory apartment that is non-rental. Um you know, so we currently enforce that and that bylaw was on the books, you know, two decades ago. Um and that's something that when new people come, they purchase property, a lot of people call the town, ask what can and can't be done, there's an apartment, can I rent it? We go through all of, you know, those rules and regulations.
Thank you.
Um and then that's just the definition, which we'll do a little bit of amending to, um, you know, so we can think about size for next time. But it's pretty much just a standard definition that's there for the accessory dwelling unit that we've recently adopted.
Yeah, do we need another definition for gross floor area?
So that was part of the, um, protected use ADU that was added in at that point. So this would just follow along from that, just one standard definition for gross floor area. Uh and then just to mention on that, the Attorney General's Office has asked for an extension through October to review our accessory dwelling unit bylaw.
Through October?
Through October, yeah, we review it mid-August, the response, so we're going to be pushed out a little bit, hopefully receive it then. So that's accessory dwelling units or EADUs. We'll have a little homework and redraft and present back to the board.
Oh, I prefer the name over the Excel.
Oh, you prefer it, okay, you can thank Sam for this. If you output a good one. So then the next thing that's on the agenda is the Affordable Housing Conditional Density Development. And I have tried to redline this so many times that I just decided to scrap the whole bylaw altogether and start from scratch, because it just is not making sense. Um so this one's a lot, but I've gone through multiple on Cape and off Cape and what works, what doesn't work. We've reached out to the development community to talk a little bit about ratios to see, is that profitable, can we do this? So it's now called just the Affordable Housing Development, so a little bit of a shorter name, so a little bit easier to find. And, you know, the purpose and authority is to encourage a variety of affordable housing types for persons of various ages and income levels, that's in accordance with Chapter Forty-eight, Section Nine. Um so we're incentivizing the creation of affordable housing, the purpose of which is to help our residents and their families who, because of rising land prices, have been unable to obtain suitable houses at an affordable price, maintain stable economy by preventing outmigration of residents who are a central part of our community, and encourage the redevelopment of existing underutilized structures. So the planning board may grant a special permit that allows an increase in density through the relaxation of dimensional requirements of this protective zoning bylaw. And any special permit granted pursuant to the section shall require that twenty-five percent of all units developed on the site be sold and maintained at affordable prices uh according to the standards. So then for the purpose of the section, you are the special permit granting authority. Procedures and affordable housing development shall contain no more than forty units in total. That was, um, what the previous one stated, we can discuss how many units we would want to see on site at a camp. Um so applications that utilize existing structures on site for rental housing will not require a definitive plan, but shall utilize a shared driveway. Applications that provide four units of housing or less shall not require a definitive plan, but shall utilize a shared driveway. And applications that profo- that propose five or more units shall be accompanied by a definitive plan application showing the proposed lots and roadways. So we're basically, um, if there's an existing structure that we want to revitalize into, you know, some affordable units and market rate units, we can use the existing layout to support that development, um which would help, would help developers be able to actually utilize this bylaw. And if we want to just do like four units, like four small cottages or something of that nature, we could also utilize that using a shared driveway and not require a full roadway to be built. And then if we're doing five units or more, we would look for a definitive plan, um we can reduce lot sizes and setbacks, but we would look for each unit to have its own, um, its own area. Um so as a further incentive for the construction of affordable housing, the board may at its discretion and upon written request from the applicant waive certain standards for requirements set forth in the Sandwich Planning Board subdivision rules and regulations. Um requirements, so for projects that utilize existing structures, the special permit granting authority shall determine the number of units allowable and the setbacks may be reduced by the special permit granting authority. Um this is so site specific that I really didn't want to put a cap on how many units could be generated on the site. It really depends on the lot size, on the character of the neighborhood, on the congestion of the traffic. There's a lot of different factors that would go into that, and because it's a special permit use, I think that we could really delve into that and look at that and see, um, you know, site specific for each area, how many units would we be able to manage on site? And then for new construction, a minimum tract of twenty thousand square feet shall be required with a hundred and fifty feet of frontage and the development shall not exceed a density of four units per acre. Um so that's all up for discussion for how dense do we want to get these? And that was just a starting point, it kind of models, I believe it was the town of Dennis, they have a pretty good affordable housing bylaw that is utilized. Um and that's kind of where some of this came from. Um I'm not sure if a hundred and fifty feet of frontage, you know, we can talk about that, I know we previously, um, talked with Mr. Fitch about reducing frontage requirements and the purpose of those, and then we can go into lot coverage. Um we would have, for smaller lots, we would have to get, you know, a, a higher lot coverage, currently we have twenty-five percent, no more than twenty-five percent. Um Dennis went to fifty, we could do something more or less than that. Uh for the front yard setback, thirty or less side and rear yard setbacks, twenty-five feet. Uh building separation fifteen feet if you were going to do multiple, you know, cottages, that type of style development. So now if you want to talk, um, a little bit about density and what you would envision per acre. So if you want to visualize, um, so if you did four units per acre, you're looking at about ten thousand square feet. So just think of like the neighborhoods like the Captains, they're all on ten thousand square foot lots. If you were to go for a, a bigger density and they were separate, Town Neck is five thousand square foot lots. Um and then as you start to move out towards some of your cluster developments like Holly Bridge, there are twenty thousand square foot lots. And then as you start to move out towards some of your cluster developments like Holly Bridge, they're twenty thousand square foot lots. So that's the type of densely packed that we should take a look at and see you know, what would what would be, what feels comfortable. And this is kind of modeled off of, if you're not utilizing existing buildings, but you're looking at developing new, it it's almost modeled off what you would think a cottage colony looks like, those smaller units, one to two bedrooms that we see on, you know, six A.
Right, something that's not, that's gonna stay within the character.
Exactly, this is all about how to create affordable housing while also protecting everything we love about Sandwich. So that can be something we think about, look more into. If there's any, you know, additional resources you want me to look into, I'm more than happy to. So then for design standards, they're supposed to be harmonious with the rest of the development around them, similar in design, appearance, construction, quality of materials and other units of the development with the surrounding neighborhood. Myself and Steve talked about actually creating some type of building forms that could be resources to those that would like to apply, if it was to be new construction, that we could have kind of forms that, you know, this is what we envision. You know, we can take samples out of out of Dennis or further down Cape, that did the Cottage Court cottage colony style year-round rental housing.
I think I'm wondering, I'm just curious if I might have the answer you have readily available, but how much land is available for new construction? So if we're thinking density and lot size, what's even available to build on? Because maybe you can kind of back into it a little bit, if there's only, you know, so many tracts available, what might those tracts look like?
It's gonna be the redevelopment of existing single-family homes. So it's gonna be those sixty thousand, forty thousand square foot lots that are up for sale, that someone will say, I can knock down a home and I can redevelop it into six, eight.
Yeah, so the new construction one might not really have.
We don't have that much vacant land left, that would be able to.
So it might not have that much impact.
Well, another thing that we could look at, which I think I had as a comment at the beginning, is if this is something that feels scary, we can always cap it. You can always say no more than five developments in the year, no more than however many, so that if this isn't working or there's something that was unforeseen, we can come back and revise.
Like we had done before with the A D Us.
Yes, like when things just felt like, I don't know if we're moving too fast or if this we want to see how this actually shakes out in implementation. We can always limit how many can occur in the year. We can also start to look at districts, like is there a certain district that this feels better than others? So it doesn't have to be town-wide, we can look at that also.
Like the limiting, like X amount a year or something like that, yep.
We used to do that a lot with development scheduling in the nineties, just so that there wasn't too much of an explosion of growth. And then just the resources that the town has to be able to keep all these permits churning.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And then we just start to go into kind of the lottery for the affordable units and what that would look like if it was rental versus if it's homeownership, depending on the developer's choice. Phasing of the construction, we always like to see, you know, one market rate to one affordable, so that they're kind of getting done at the same time. You know, you give your occupancy to your affordables first and then your market rate. If they're rental, they'll all go towards our S H I, if they're homeownership, just those that are deed restricted well. And we will work through a monitoring agent with that, but that would all be part of the special permit process. And something we're kind of used to doing through local action units. And then projects, I'm sorry?
Sorry, is there, is there a way to limit this to strictly to redevelopment?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, we could say lots that are currently comprised of single-family homes can be subject to redevelopment through this so that we can leave existing tracts of land in an open condition.
Yes, it'd be interesting exploring that.
Yeah. And I think we have a lot of underutilized office buildings and commercial spaces that there's no reason they couldn't be transformed into units.
Yep.
So, you know, we kind of try to incentivize that through this bylaw that said we can create this without, you know, obviously septic is gonna be a limiting factor, of course, but without, you know, the expense of roadways and things. So then special permit criteria, the proposed development conforms to the design standards of the bylaw, will deliver affordable units. The proposed development site plan is designed in its proportions, orientations, materials, landscaping, and other features. So it has to provide a stable and desirable character complementary to and integral with natural features. So these would be the criteria that you would be going through if this was good for you. The board finds that the development and commensurate density increase does not have a detrimental effect on the character of the neighborhood or community and is consistent with the performance standards of the bylaws. And then the proposed development is consistent with all the municipal comprehensive plans, policies, and objectives. And then we get into long-term affordability, so this is just the type of deed restrictions that go on the affordable units. And then this is just, this actually came from the existing bylaw, which was just the submission requirements for a special permit, so we just kind of spelled them out a bit more clearly there. And then what we would look for with the definitive plan, if that was submitted as part of this bylaw. I know that was a lot, I have to switch it up.
Yeah.
You know, whatever you think and and, you know, density is the main thing here of what we think we can achieve without any detrimental impact to neighbors, roadways, infrastructure, while also trying to achieve some of our affordable housing goals. But I think incentivizing what's already existing and the redevelopment of that might be key.
Exactly, yep.
That's everything I had on zoning. Thank you.
Is there other zoning board amendments in the works?
So the, there's two other items that we're currently working on. One is a revision to the sign code, which is a general bylaw that goes before the select board. Our sign code has not been updated, like a real revision really since like the nineties. It's very restrictive on our business community. And also just doesn't make a lot of sense. So we're trying to create something that would help fulfill the business community's desire to be seen, so people know where they are. While also just keeping that aesthetic appearance, so we don't have sign pollution. You know, if we can keep it uniform, you know, make them larger so people know where people, where things are. Just kind of more of a common sense approach. So we're currently working on that, and then we're also working on short-term rentals. So we will take the approach of expressly allowing a special town meeting, if we have one, the select board has not voted yet. And then moving on to a rigorous process with the public to see what type of regulations do you want, the level of regulations? Do you want any regulations? And then work off of that to create something for annual town meeting if the residents do want regulations on the use.
And is there any progress on the seasonal rental regulations that were discussed at last time?
For the short-term rental?
Yes.
Yeah, so so what we're going to do is I'm actually gonna work with Pierce Cote to do a survey, a townwide survey, and try to get as many people to participate as possible to discuss, you know, what what type of regulations, if any, we would want to see on this use. Because I think last time we had heard from so many people that complained, but not enough people that own short-term rentals or have them as their livelihood or to be able to pay their taxes. So, you know, that was kind of a failing on our part, that we needed to go out and really talk to the business community about, you know, what what kills your operation, like we, and that's not our intent, it's it's how to just keep respectful neighborhoods and allow people to be able to do what they need to do with their property. Working, working on that, yeah.
There's a lot of input. And so, Leanne, you you said that you had looked at Dennis's bylaws, was there another town that you had also reviewed?
Dennis, Orleans, Barnstable, Marion. There was one more off-Cape, we did five. And then I took Cape Cod Commission's model bylaws for inclusionary zoning. I believe Dennis has the most successful.
I'm just thinking it might be helpful if we're gonna continue reviewing a draft and making further decisions that I would like to kind of take a look at some of those other options that are out there, what people are crafting for their language and restrictions or.
I mean, I, the towns that were successful, I can ask for pictures of the development so that we get it, some type of visuals of like, what does that look like, what does that density look like? We hope someone will take a look at that and see what feels comfortable for us. And we might want to take a look at zoning districts. We may not want this townwide, but I think our commercial areas would have more for infill and revitalization of existing structures. Then if we wanted to try and get additional affordable housing, like our R-two district has the largest tracts of land for redevelopment. Which is something to think about.
We do have someone from the public that we might be heard, can we do that?
Your session, since you're prerogative?
Yeah. I think Attorney Fitch, did you want to make a comment?
With your permission.
Love to have you.
This is a board discussion.
Come on up.
Regarding Leanne's.
And your name, your name and address, of course.
Let me real quick, I'm John Fitch, currently in Grove Street. And I just heard this presentation by Leanne on the conditional density. And I'm I'm just really impressed. This, that bylaw has been on the books as lip service to affordable housing since last century. Nobody, nobody ever produced any housing because of that bylaw. And in my view, I've brought this up lots of times, it was deliberately designed to be lip service. A couple of years ago, I raised that to Leanne when she was newer here and said, can we look at this? And she graciously said, yes. We did, and there were some changes made. Nobody has taken us up on it. We tried, but it didn't happen. And I kind of just sat back and gave up. But to hear this tonight, my sincere thanks to Leanne and Steve's support. And I would love to see this bylaw come to something where somebody can make, deliver some housing. There's got to be a way. It's a substitute in a way for Chapter forty B. And that's not bad. Thank you. I look forward to reading this and I'll pester them. Thanks, comments. Thank you.
Did I follow up, is that? My name's Jake Dewey, I live in Barnstable. And I am a small-scale housing and affordable housing developer, and just in Barnstable at this point. But I do own an office building here on six A, and I met with Leanne and Steve a few weeks back to see, hey, could we convert this to some form of housing, you know, what could we do? And we, we tried and we started to see if there was a path to to get a special permit to do it, and we didn't find a way to really do it. And so that's sort of why I was here tonight, to see where this was going as a discussion, because it could be an opportunity to create, use the existing structure, potentially change nothing when you drive down six A, it would look ideally exactly the same. You may have to follow safety, you know, egress and stuff like that, but there's currently eleven office units there, it's been a challenge to fill them. And I think we could get somewhere between six and nine units of of housing. And even the non-deed restricted affordable, everything I've done in the past has been very workforce price point, and I'd hope using the existing structure, we'd be able to sort of hit that mark and and really make it workforce attainable housing. It's one forty-one Route six A, it's the Salt Pond Building.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah.
And, you know, there is, there is a place for, sort of, I call them affordable offices for the small business owner. But most of them are using their 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 house, their, you know, former residents to to create that space, so. It's been a challenge, we've had like three or four vacancies for over a year now, until I started looking at this and looked at this this septic capacity and then was trying to figure out if there was a a way to to create this, you know, if it was gonna be zoning board path or to to your board path or how we would go about it, but we didn't find a way, but this seems like it could be an opportunity of and I'm not really a forty B guy, I don't really like doing the forty B thing, I would much rather have it, the town is welcoming. You know, you guys decide what you'd like to see, and then we can follow that.
Great, thank you for having us.
Thank you, thank you for working.
We're advised, send another draft for your next board meeting and we can discuss further.
Great.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you so much, very thorough work, so, thank you. Let's move on to the vacancy of the planning board. Steve?
Well, working to close the gap on institutional knowledge, but so there's been some informal discussion about the vacancy and discuss, some of you may know some people that might be interested. I have a term of end for this, sort of best past practice for the town noticing the fact that there's a vacancy available. We did look into the Talent Bank, there are only a couple of people that have voluntarily submitted their contact information for future contacts, so that's not a wealth of resources, we can certainly leverage that, but so you would presumably meet with one or more candidates that you're interested in, provide a referral to the select at that point.
Okay.
Is that?
Correct, yeah, so the, we're too far away from elections, so Jeff resigned his position here to become a member of the Finance Committee, you're not able to hold a dual position when you're a Finance Committee member. And so we sat and see him go, but we would be continuing out his term until May, until the election. And then if the person liked it, they would be running for election. And they could pull their papers, I believe they start March, April timeframe to do that. And so we'd just be looking for someone to fill from now until until May, and if they liked it, they could, they could run for election. We haven't heard from too many people, you know, through our channels that were interested, so if you know anyone that would like to serve on the planning board or give it a shot until May, please let us know, and we can get them on the agenda to meet with the board, discuss their interest. And then if the board wants to move them forward, it goes to the select board. And they vote to appoint just for that term until May.
Does it need to be filled?
It doesn't need to be filled, but we just sometimes run into quorum issues if several people are on vacation, if it's a special permit, we need five of you. It it really just depends on the type of business that's before you. Typically like to see our boards fall.
We do know two people that may be interested. They had mentioned something about, you know, how how did I get on the planning board, and when we're asking some questions. Unfortunately, it was after the election, although we have two great numbers here who were written in, thankfully, and so I will follow up with them. When would be the best time for them to sort of, what's the deadline, is there a deadline?
There is no deadline, no, so just to reach out, you know, whenever they're available, and we're happy to meet with them and set a process up.
We can move on to the next item, which is a request for comment. Keep losing my agenda, sorry. So request for comment, number twenty-five dash eleven, one sixty-one Route six A, special permit amendment, ankle realty, and Shayna Ferlo.
So this is the Snowy Owl, also asked for an amendment. And they previously had their special permit, they've been in that location for about five years. They have been using the public parking nearby around that circle for overflow parking and employee parking. So as part of the special permit, parking was discussed, the number of parking spots was discussed, parking was to remain on-site. And it has been, that public parking area has been used. It kind of came before the board's attention during a scenic road hearing where a tree was being impacted. And this tree warden came before you to ask to put down the tree, and that's what kind of initiated the complaint, starting then with the Building Department. And then myself and the Building Commissioner met with the property owners and the business owners to discuss what was happening and that it was a violation, and they subsequently filed for a special permit amendment.
I think the points that were brought up by the public today with the impact it's having on the roadways, the curves, is important, because those will have to get repaired by the town if it's town property, so I think that impact's important, also congestion to the neighborhood, it does seem to have some congestion component relative to people coming in and out of their property, if they, if it did impact the homeowner's tag sale, I don't know, I don't know. That's what we're told. So I think the congestion is a component. I don't know how much it would cost for them to expand their parking lot, but if it's not, you know, if it's doable, that might be a good alternative. You had mentioned that there was a formal complaint, was the formal complaint specifically noting anything that hadn't been mentioned already?
No, specifically noting the parking. And then since then, we've had several residents stop by and send letters. Also, that that couple that used to have their yard sale twice, three times a year, they did let us know, they did write a letter to the board, that they no longer do that because there's no place to park for people when they have this, that it's impacting where they reside.
And I love the yards jail, because you have ever seen it all the time on the front, yeah.
I also think the the comment that was made about long-term parking versus people coming in and having a coffee and leaving. There's a big difference there. And to have parking there all day, it's an impediment to the rest of the community, so.
Is it year-round that they're doing it, or is it just seasonal? Is it year-round that they're doing it or is it just seasonal, every year?
So, so this, I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to say, because I, I thought they could, there was enough so that they could park at their parking lot and the customers just come and go really quick, so.
They're primarily a, not manufacturing, but they, they brew the coffee there for their other locations as well as certain baked goods for other locations. So there's a significant amount of employees that are there, that are, that are not servicing the customers that come in, but are doing more operations. So I think that that's where the volume comes from, because it can be upwards of fifteen cars parked there daily that are, that do belong to the business.
That was my question, like how many, like fifteen cars that they're constructing specifically go park here?
Yeah, I'd say between six and fifteen, depending on the day and what was going on at the location.
Which would take up a lot of their lot.
Yeah, correct.
Because their lot is often very crowded. And I, I could see some business owners seeing an opportunity for employees to park away so that patrons have a safer entry and exit into business. But I wouldn't say that that area where they're parking is really high volume. Because it's not like people are going to be walking across a busy road to get to the coffee shop, right? So I don't think there's that concern to have your employees sort of off away so that your patrons can be closer to the business.
And I will just say, the business had no idea this was a violation of any type of permits they had. I mean, they were very forthcoming and, and good to work with through this issue. They just assumed it was public parking, that they could happily use that. So, you know, there was no mal-intent here when, when that did occur.
Have, do they have, have they explored other options, like making arrangement with other properties in the area?
I don't believe so, not to my knowledge. Last we had spoken, the only other option that they were going to look into to see if it was viable would be to create more onsite parking themselves.
Is there a shuttling option? Is there another parking lot that they could utilize?
That's what I would, I would talk to the funeral home and the mini golf.
Yeah, that's what I would do. I would just go talk to them and see if they could work something out.
Yeah, for offsite parking, if it's further than three hundred feet, it just requires a special permit through the zoning board. And they just look at distances and impact to neighborhoods for satellite parking lots, but it's feasible.
For a block of time, and if they needed to leave, they could get a shuttle on call just to kind of go and get their car. I don't know if there's a spot that they could barter or do something with.
So would the board like to put forward a comment to look at alternative solutions rather than?
Did, did you say, Leanne, so if they made an arrangement with another business owner to allow the people to park in someone's lot like the funeral home, that would require a special permit?
It just depends on the distance from the business to the parking lot. So if we go over three hundred feet, we require a special permit. So so far, I have, if the planning board would like to consider impact, impacts the parking is having on the roadways and any repairs that that might need. The congestion to those that live in that neighborhood with, with year-round daily parking. And that the board would like the applicant to explore other parking solutions other than utilizing the public parking area.
Yep, I have a question though, like are they, are they outside compliance with their permit?
Technically, yes, but they could be authorized to do so. So it's, it's, they were, the board didn't expressly say you're not allowed to park anywhere bar on-site. But for a special permit use, we always look at parking, they did discuss the parking on-site and if the parking count was enough to service the operation, which would include employees. So they were never expressly authorized to overflow onto public parking. If it was a by right use, like Treehouse is a by right use in its district, they can overflow parking elsewhere that we wouldn't have control over. They could park in public parking because their use is by right. For a special permit use, you cannot. So, you know, I think that that's where it's, it's, it's technicalities in the zoning, but they should be authorized to do so.
And why was there some special permit versus Treehouse, for example?
Special permit was a by, Treehouse was a by right use in there. So by right just means they did not require a special permit, they're in a business district. They actually are in a business district as it goes forward towards into residential. So they were allowed to operate their business throughout these types of permits.
That really answers my, the one question I had, Leanne, is why is this a violation in the first place? Thinking about a lot of businesses around town that I know there is inadequate parking for their employees and it's routine that they would park off-site and walk to work short distance, so.
Yeah.
I mean, this, this is an interesting property. I mean, I can remember they used to do the farmer's market there, there's always cars parked there. I think there were cars parked there before the Snowy Owl came around. Is this town land still?
The, the park itself is split between state highway layout and then town property. That's how I understand it. So the roads that go through there, it's Main Street, it's a continuation of Main Street proper. And then Dewey Ave. And then that, that land is adjacent to Main Street is town property, as I understand.
And the land is maintained by the Parks Department, is it?
I'm not sure of that, I heard that, that mentioned, I actually just don't know how that works with the maintenance. It may, very well may be.
Okay, so our, our comment then will include our concerns and that they should seek.
Yeah, so that the board feels comfortable with those three I outlined, you should just take a vote to, to move those forward so that we have a consensus of the board.
Okay. So with that, I'm here, a motion to.
Can I make a voice? I make a motion to make these comments to the zoning board of appeals and that's it.
A second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
We have another request for comment, and this is number twenty-five dash twelve, five Factory Street special permit, Nancy A. Fitch and Jonathan D. Fitch, trustees of the Ellsworth Realty Trust. And I know we have a gentleman in the audience ready to go.
Thank you again. Welcome to the wonderful, wacky world, often confusing of non-conformities. That's all this is.
Thank you for that introduction.
My wife and I have a ten thousand square foot lot and it has a footprint of, of a house that is eight hundred and ninety square feet right now. And we'd like to put a little addition on and move in. I think Steve, you guys broke it. So that's the current house, and it's right up the street. And that's the site plan where we would be adding another six hundred and fifty square feet. And that's what it would look like from the front. The reason that I have to get a special permit is because the house is, it's non-conforming, because it's only twenty-two feet from Factory Street. And the, the R1 front yard setback, I think is thirty feet. So it's non-conforming. We want to add on toward the right, a garage with a bedroom over, and maintain the same setback, but that's non-conforming. So I need a special permit. The standard for the special permit is that the ZBA will be asked to find that the addition is not, the new non-conformity is not substantially more detrimental to the neighbor of it than the current non-conformity. That sounds a little, when I said wacky world, you have to presume that everything that is a non-conformity is detrimental. And that's kind of ridiculous. Anyway, so that's, that's their standard, I hope they'll find it very easily. And I ask for your support as well.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
That's fine, we can let this go as you see fit without comment.
Or, or we could. Sorry, I was actually not sure. Should we say that we? We sort of have no concerns?
I, I think generally for the issues that would fall within the purview of the planning board from an addition, this is probably a no comment unless you feel strongly there's something to support here that's beneficial.
Okay, great.
Okay, thank you very much.
We don't need a clear answer. Thank you. Getting used to this. Are there any other matters that are not reasonably anticipated this evening? Okay, we're hearing none. I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
See you next time. Thank you, that was a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
That's actually the biggest field meeting we've ever had.
Support, try to find that balance always.
Simplify.
Simple is the better, I think, right?
Thank you.